What's up YouTube? It's Jamal back with another video. And today, as you can tell by the title, well I don't know if I put all this in title. But um, today, we're on an all-day field trip to the U of M. I'm being a little studious for you know like, five, six hours. I'm being a little studious. I get done with all my work for the rest of the year. I've been watching like, all the old movies like, I used to watch as a kid. Watched all three Cars movies, right? I'm debating on if I wanna watch Ratatouille next, or, or Incredibles? But yeah, so we stuck on that right now. But um, and then, we gotta track practice later. And then after that, we went to game one of the Wolves vs. Bears. And you know it's like, Wolves in five, you know, maybe four. I don't think Kyrie's gonna get, Kyrie, Kyrie and getting swept shall never go in the same sentence. So I say five, or six, but not four. I don't, I don't, I don't think he's gonna sweat. Um, and then, uh, tomorrow is our last meet before sections. As of now, I don't know if I'm going to sections for my, for my uh, event. But I know I'm going for um, for my relay. But I'll only probably be there for one day cuz like, track you got it, like I'm not, it's not my body, or, or... Alright, bye, bye, bye. You catch off the catch one dribble pull for game? For game? Ain't, ain't gonna foul call for game? Come on, bro. But yeah, that's really about it, bro. I just woke up so like, if I'm looking like beat down, like, don't do too much. Um, I'm gonna go make some little breakfast before I eat and then make my lunch. So that I don't have to buy nothing when I get there cuz if I know, I know, I know if I get there, I'm gonna be tempted to buy something, so I might as well just make something before I leave. Type shit. But um, yeah, uh, I'll see you later.
A few moments later.
What, what do you have to say? What do you have to say to the camera?
Jamal has some things in his bag where you know, the scouts knew?
I guess.
Jamal better play, if those scouts don't find us, YouTube, bro. Get some scary business.
My YouTube is, uh, uh, children friendly.
Oh fuck, we're going to the Black.
We're going into Dungeons and Dragons.
This is where Drake, this is where Drake keeps his kids.
B, how do you know this? How? Hold on, bro. How? How you, I'm saying, how, like, talk to me, bro. You the police? Is you the LBI? CIA? What's your?
So in case Jamal hasn't told y'all already, we're at the Walter Library doing a little tour. Uh, we're gonna get some indie work in later, you know? Get some good homework done. Uh, Jamal needs to do his EE. He hasn't done any of it yet. He slack, he chat. By the way, if any teachers are watching this, anybody, any scouts that are looking for academic honesty, he chat GPTs all the time. He doesn't do any of this, it's all AI, so.
Are you doing YouTube? What's up?
Right here, there's a little hole in the wall.
Oh, that's what Mia tripped on?
Look, it was a little dink.
That's what you tripped on?
That's what I tripped on. Cuz like...
So then why'd you fall down the stairs? Ay yo, what the? Bring your ass out. I was scared. Because I could dig into it, you know, it had like four views, but now it had like seventy-eight and I don't know how it went up so fast, but yeah. It was all you, you just streamed it?
I watched it seventy-four times.
You watched it seventy-four times? That's amazing. You're vlogging. Where?
Jay Randall, ay, Jay Randall underscore on YouTube, subscribe.
No, eh, I changed it. It's life, it's life with Jay.
That fucking is.
I know, I have to find a good name.
Jay Poggers.
Jay Poggers?
Jay, whoa.
You're right, my bad. I'm sorry, chat.
Chatscape Jay. Remember the old days?
The olden days?
Olden days is Chatscape Jay.
Yeah. He has never had a spinning chair in his life.
What's going on guys? Welcome back. Today, we're going to Chipotle.
And Canes.
And Canes, and maybe some other places.
No, not some other places. You don't need all that food.
Well, but we gotta explore.
We might get some drinks.
Oh, we got a burger?
Yeah, maybe.
Burger's disgusting. Oh, we doing Fitchat, we doing Fitchat, Fitchat?
Time.
Fitchat, Fitchat, Fitchat. Alright, um, uh...
Switch, eh, switch it on.
Alright, I got the Dewey, you know? Uh, Dewey type, like the waves, you know? Uh, I got a Duke on, you know? Finna be a Duke commit. You're right, my bad.
His ass is not gonna do.
Uh, yeah, Duke commit, um, you know, we're going to the game, so I got the, I got the T Wolves, the T Wolves shirt on.
He a fake fan by the way, he's a Warriors fan.
No, I'm not, chat, okay. I got the, the, the TCA sweats on, you know?
At the vet.
The, 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 you were, 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 no, we got the, the easy slides you were.
I, I touched it.
And then, and then, and then the Nike Drift socks. And then I got a, I got a ninety Kane chain under here, you just can't see it.
There's no chain on. Alright, so I got, you know, I got the hair type shit.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I got the little Hopkins hustle.
Oh yeah, oh yeah.
We uh, basically won the tournament, you know what I mean? Pretty close to that. Got the little, little shorts on, you know, compression shorts type shit.
We go.
Gotta get them. Uh, and then I got like the pink crocs on. These motherfuckers. We're doing a Fitchat!
We have to be back until twenty-five, bro.
I knew the purple's fake, but I'm not grim.
I know the purple's fake, yeah, but I still ate it. You wanna know why? Cuz I'm a grim.
Hashtag real eaters.
But he already ate his cuz he's very, very, very... He's very big back. Oh, I have to take a picture of my food.
You already did.
Yeah. And we're also watching Flight reacts, so... If you wonder, like, if you care. But you don't, you don't have to care cuz me and him care. Yo, I didn't get no sauce. I sold. I just noticed that.
No game sauce?
Your father's salty enough, it's okay. In two hours, chat. Finished three things. No. Chat, he still up just with this elevator. It looks nice though. Of course. My dish is in there. What, two? We going to? I'm talking to Eva, but we got chat.
Oh, it's one!
No, it's not. Oh, it is the basement four. Dang it.
Now it's gonna be a slower ride. Stop feeling, stop feeling your job, bro.
We can jump and make you, make it fall, make it fall. Fail the ten. That's Draymond. He can't see. What are they chanting?
Meanwhile.
Rudy sucks, not me, but I do.
Again?
I didn't do anything. What's it gonna mean for? You did it to them, not me.
You know, uh... Hey, go home, we'll see y'all next year.
Yeah, stop!
Yeah, ah!
Yo, stop! He's looking right at me. You trying to give me copyright, bro? Like, stop. Um, you ain't gonna lie, bro. I'm, I'm not vlogging like that for like, the same part of the EDC. Obviously, not the game parts, but like, you can go watch the highlights in your own time. I'm sorry, I don't do that. Stay and watch the video. But anyways, bro. First of all, whoever that ref was, you're terrible. You're absolutely terrible. You're, you're the worst ref. You, you're probably worse than Scott Foster. And I'm a Warriors fan, so I stand with CP3. You're probably worse than Scott Foster. And I'm a, what am I, mother, bro? Like you, you, you suck, bro, like, on every... What am I, mother, you suck, bro. Like you, you're dead, you're... Yeah, anyways, the other two refs, they were fine, I guess, they know that. Two, Ky was giving us the works, bro. Like, Kyrie was literally dogging us all game, bro. Like, gang. I've never seen a, a person come down the floor, right? Like, gang, you wanna come down the floor? Cool. Just, just lay that, lay out with your left hand. No, Kyrie wanna be fancy. Like, gang, you wildin', gang. Relax. And then, Luca weak tail. Ay. We've already beat one European, right? We don't wanna beat another, we're tired of y'all. Stop. Like, gang, you're trash. Three, Will, I hate you with everything in me, gang. Ah, you're not even on Will's level. You're, you're a plumber. You're a plumber. Dare you gaffe him? You're a plumber. Four, Jaden McDams. I think I seen your girlfriend today. She was pregnant, she was walking. First of all, why she walking, gang? You're a millionaire. Get her a valet, get her a, her, her private escort, like, like Warren. But like, bruh, he was wildin', gang. He had like twenties, twenty-nine? But yeah, he was wildin', gang, he was wildin'. I give you your props, bro, cuz he was wildin', gang. And then, Aunt Rolex. I'm not mad, I'm just disappointed in how he played. So yeah, we're down oh-one, right? I'm oh-one-three going to playoff games. I think I'm definitely going to playoff games cuz like, I might be bad luck. Oh, last thing. There, there may be a clip, maybe, maybe or not. Draymond, son.
Free throws for the Warriors, but because of that...
He has four rings. Please shut your trap. He has four more than the whole Timberwolves franchise. We're the greatest team to ever exist. You're wildin', bro. Be quiet, bro. OG didn't tell you, teach you manners, gang? Like, you, you, y'all be wildin', gang, and it's not, it's not cool cuz we're the best team in the cut. We're the best team in the world. I'm tweaking. Oh my god, I'm going to bed. I'm going to bed. I'll see y'all tomorrow. What up YouTube? Um, I'm at lunch right now. I don't have anything to eat. I'm finna go scavenge for something later. But um... Yeah, bro. In a way, we should have lost to the Dallas Mavericks. That's insane. What am I, mother, that's insane. Um, but yeah, they decided to be trash for some reason. And, 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 and... But yeah, uh, I got forty more minutes until the bus comes. So, uh, I'm gonna be in class for like five minutes and then I'm gonna miss my whole study hall, but I'm studious enough that I can get my little work done, uh, before I have to, I mean, before, before school's over. We only have a week left and then we got, um, spring intensive, just like, a week of like, fun stuff. And they put me in disc golf, shorty. And I was like, bro, I'm not doing that, but y'all better put me in sports belt. Word. So, um, I'm trying to switch out of that. And then, um... Uh, I got like three assignments left, bro. I got like three assignments left and then, um... And then, uh, uh... Yeah, so, I don't know if I'm vlogging that much eh, at the track meet cuz uh, I got a headache and I don't feel like talking to nobody. So, yeah, but if I decide to pick up the camera, then I will, but otherwise, um, I'll just see y'all when I see y'all.
I know you're nuts. So, so, my first video, y'all don't know if I told you, my first video is gonna be, I'm gonna get two random people, right, and I'm gonna take them to DTLR. Well, one of them's not random, it's my coworker. He swear he's the flyest guy around, so I'm gonna get one random. He got ten minutes to pick out an outfit from DTLR. I got one person, that's why he's the flyest. He gonna go to City Trans and get outfits from there. The winner, whoever has, you know, we just gonna ask random people that come into DTLR, you know, when I work, uh, who outfit better, who look flyer, right? Whoever outfit look better, get, get bought. I'll buy their, I'll buy, I'll buy their outfit, but I won't buy the shoes.
Okay.
The loser has to wear and buy outfit, or partially buy, I might go have of the, of the winner's choosing. So you can either have them look a bogus, or you can have them look a decent. And then, we gonna go out, and them, and them same outfits.
I'll put that nigga in a skirt.
And them, and them same outfits, we gonna go out.
No ditty, that was crazy.
Tune in, tune in to the YouTube, it's coming soon. Jamal gonna help me out, you feel me? So tune in.
He always let me hang in front of them.
Oh my. Coach Brother, question of the day, what does your gun sound like?
We just dropped the baton.
Really?
Guys, I'm so mad, I'm so sad, I'm so tired, I'm so hungry. My nose is hurting cuz of the sun, like, I'm gonna... You're so weird!
You just smacked my headphones off.
Thank you. Look, hey guys, it's me, Jamal Randall here.
Ah, I see nobody cares about you.
Stop, it's they do, they like me more than you. They like me more than you. This is Anderson. This is Anderson. Okay, so if Jamal would walk, this would be nice. Okay, yeah.
I don't like having a camera, man.
Why? Okay, turn to me. Guys, I was just late.
Coach Brother's better than you. Question of the day, what does your gun sound like?
What's my gun sound like?
Weakest track we ever, just kidding.
I'm proud of you, uh...
I don't wanna do it anymore. Hi guys, my name's Aneah, I'm one of the track managers. Hashtag number one track manager out there.
Chat, none of the track managers do anything. Okay, let me tell you. This is the, this is the fastest black person I know. And it's because, it's because...
Cuz you're black!
Marcelo, you might remember, uh, what was your nickname on the channel? I forget. He was, he was old shorty from Ninja Turtles. Uh, the, the rat nigga.
Slinter?
Yes. He's Master Slinter. That's, that's his nickname.
Why he always be strong, he always be strong PR?
Kingston says Moses Malone is the goat.
Yes, he is. Moses Malone. Man, what would he know about? What do you know about, what do you know about the Marion? Oh my gosh, the Heat.
Yup.
Not the Heat, the Rockets.
Yup.
And the Hawks. Yeah? Uh, this is seventy-four. Yup. The back chick, who's on the back?
The Bullets?
The Bullet, yeah, he playing for the Bullets.
He's a casual.
If you let me remember.
My bad, you right. Sorry.
Can you name every team Dwyane Wade's played for? The Heat.
You don't even know, you just looked it up.
I'm looking at Moses Malone. What?
Yeah.
Dwyane Wade?
Yeah.
Yeah, Dwyane Wade, right on. He spent, he was with the Heat and then he spent like three months on the Cavs.
That's it?
Was that it?
That's it?
And then...
That's it? Is that it? The Bulls!
Shoutout! He was. Him, Jimmy Butler.
Butler.
Um, Luol Deng was on it too.
Noah.
Joakim Noah.
And, and Taj, I think. Big give. Are you a casual? Are you a casual?
Uh, I am modern day casual. When you get to the only history, I, I know some of my stuff.
What up chat? Um, I was editing and I realized I didn't do an outro, which is like, L, like, L, L tube, like, what are you doing? But um, yeah, so this is our intro, um... I'm at my thousand points, bro, almost there. Um, I got a camera, right? So with this camera, there's gonna be more consistent J. Better quality J. Better quantity J. More uploading. Better content, like, everything. Like, I'm finna go crazy to some. Word, I'm finna go crazy. But um, yeah, anyways, like, like, comment, share, subscribe. Share this with your whole family tree. Make sure your family tree, like, all of them, like, from three thousand BC to like, forty, forty, if we even get there. Like, yeah, make sure everybody subscribe and turn on their post notifications. And like, and, and... Like, yeah, make sure everybody subscribe and turn on their post notifications, and like, and, 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 and comment, and whatever. And thank you guys for watching.